Good evening, welcome to the planning board meeting for August ninth, two thousand and sixteen. I have to announce that we are recording this for the purpose of the minutes. Elcat is also recording this, and I need to ask if anyone in the audience is recording yet?
No.
See, amen, we will jump right in. We have a continuation of a public hearing.
Yes, we do. I have a letter here from Paul Morissette, Fire Chief, East Long Metal Fire Department. Gary, this is to Gary. Take a look at the original plan we put our overlay on. Is your plan shrunk slightly to one inch equal forty scale so we can use our overlay? A fire apparatus has an average turning radius of forty-two feet. The attached plan shows that we will be turning in parked cars. We may make it if we go into the exit lanes, but that will interfere with the existing traffic. Can you submit a plan showing the forty-two foot turning radius on it?
That's it. That's all the new stuff? But Deborah was at my office today, and Chief Morissette came in, so she can tell you what he had to say. He did receive a late copy.
Okay. I'm part of the initial discussions.
I'm sorry?
I'm going to recuse myself that I was a part of the initial discussions.
Yes.
In speaking with Paul today, and he had the overlay that he's requesting, and the shrinking down scale, you can't actually see the turning radius on three different locations in the blueprint. So what I was told, what was asked, was to rescale the print to a size that the fire department was able to take their vehicle and see where that forty-two foot vehicle and the turning radius was able to do. And we took the overlay, and we put it on a brief section. It's not a full plan, whatsoever a full plan. And it was very tight at the time. But Paul didn't have the chance to, being that the plans were given so late today, he didn't have the chance to properly review them. So we don't have a final verdict from him, as of right now.
And did the police get a chance to look at new plans or anything?
No.
And I know we are just getting one tonight for the first time.
Which is the second one that's right there.
And it was not revised with your request of the fire department.
Now, what are the changes to this plan from the last plan we saw two weeks ago?
The plan you saw two weeks -- I'm sorry, I'm Charlie Schmidt.
Thank you, Charlie.
I'm the architect for the project I have with the Dr. Benton Coughlin, the owner. The changes that were made since the first meeting were a substitution of two trees. That was the last iteration, so that we had high-pitched lindens rather than those species that were put out front. And one parking space was taken away at the entrance, so the radius could be enlarged. Now, we've taken a second parking space and relocated it to the side to graduate that radius even further. It's, I think it's thirty feet on the inside, but that doesn't include the radius for the parking stall and the straight section for the egress from the site. So there is room for relocating yet another space, but I think that's adequate. I'd be more than happy to lay that out on the fire department ground so that they could actually test it instead of trying to overlay plans.
So that's the only change, is right?
That's the only change.
Robin, if I remember right, during the roundtable, wasn't the fire department concerned about the access road coming in, the driveway being greater than ninety degrees? So literally, you're coming back with it?
Well, the radius would answer that in any case, but I don't believe that that's You can see that the plane of the driveway is here. The entry is here. It may be ninety-five degrees rather than ninety, but the loss of the two spaces should mitigate that.
Okay, maybe I'm not saying where are we losing parking spaces?
We had, from the original, we had
Side by side.
Two additional spaces here.
Right out in the front.
And we've taken them out of the islands that we had on the way down the hill.
And put them there, okay. So those islands are no longer there?
No, those are reduced from what they were earlier.
Okay.
And you're right up against the minimum parking, ninety and ninety?
Ninety at this point, yes.
And that's what's required?
Yes.
You do have room to put two more spaces in where the islands are?
Yeah, if we needed to do that. It's just that Dr. Coughlin's practices it is now doesn't generate the sort of activity that you see in a medical clinic, so that the allowance for parking seems generous for that particular use.
But we don't know who else is going in the building?
No, we don't. And we don't know who would be there afterwards, so I understand.
George, I'm not even sure, because we have a ratio we need, is it twelve percent or ten percent green space?
Twelve percent.
Parking areas, so.
Well, with all the green space back here, I don't know if they consider that within the
No, I can't answer that. The wonder of the CAD systems is that you can put a polyline on every angle and every curve, and I think we have close to fifteen percent green space. So the loss of the one space and the minuscule cut from the radius will endanger that.
Deb, were you able to bring yourself up to speed?
Yes.
Watching the last meeting and all of it?
Yes, yeah.
You have any thoughts going forwards as far as?
Well, my thoughts right now are, the police department and the fire department have not had the opportunity to review this and make a recommendation. That's one. And two, I would like to see it redone the way that the police department's, or, excuse me, the fire department is asking.
By redone, not to the scale?
To the scale, with the vehicle, with the radius.
Which scale is that?
I believe we can work with a twenty or a forty?
Twenty or forty, okay.
Yeah, the, but I just read it as a forty scale.
I'm not positive on that. Yep, forty scale ideal.
That's a simple deal.
This is overrated.
All right, forty?
Yeah, he said, yeah, he said here, he goes, "Is your plan shrunk slightly to a forty scale so that we can use our overlay?" So forty scale must be redone.
Right. And shrinking it can sometimes not be accurate either.
There's a thirty scale here, okay.
Right.
Yeah, if it's done with a Xerox machine or a copier, it's distorted. But if it's generated from the computer, it'll be accurate.
George, any?
You know, I like the plan overall, but I really feel I can't vote on it until the fire department signs off, because that's a public safety issue.
Yeah, my feeling's the same. I like the project. I mean, it's nice to see that property developed. I think the project looks great. I like the artist rendering and everything else. But since it's a safety issue, I'd like to have the fire department, you know, sign off on it. I probably wouldn't mind approving it contingent upon their approval and getting things the way they need it so that they feel safe. But I don't know if you want to mechanically go that route or not, but that's how I feel about it. I'm fine, provided that the Paul Morissette and the police chief both are fine with it as well.
But the police have not had the opportunity to review.
No. They didn't pick it up today and put it in their box.
They reviewed it last time though, right?
Yes. They're looking for, you know, they're not happy with the entrances.
Well, their concern was not the radius.
Not the radius, the entrances.
Yeah, like they said, it's a fire department issue. Their concern was that they would have liked to have seen another entrance, basically, on the other side.
Yeah, Deborah, if I may, that, we did look at
Yes, and I, yeah.
That we went through, but trying to come out at this point, which also is not
It was explained as a grade issue.
Now, the grade is quite severe, and we have no latitude here where we're picking up fourteen, fifteen feet inside with the buildings. But the gradients on the lot are at five percent, which is nice for people my age. Even on the side, it's at two percent where the handicap spaces aren't as required by law. So I think we're, I mean, I think we meet the standards, and I would be happy to either adjust or give you that overlay so that the fire chief can feel better. I don't, to create a second entrance is a whole different, whole different thing.
Right, right.
Would all be quite a bit of work and planning.
Now, there was an existing curb cut over on that side, so I'm assuming what you're looking to do is just fill that in?
Yes, we'll put curb there.
Just one here?
I'm happy from the police department standpoint, just the fire department that I really need to sign off on, in my opinion, because I hate to go forward with that. And the problem then is, we prove it contingent on, and then they absolutely insist that another space get moved, then we've got a different plan that we haven't voted on, so I
I'm in agreement with George on that. I think that, well, if the fire department could get the things that they're asking for and have the ability to review it, and they say it's okay with it, I mean, it's a great facility. It's going to be beautiful. I would feel comfortable.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I want to be comfortable as well, not on the edge. So if it's necessary to relocate yet another space, we consider that as well. It's just, you'd like to have the spaces proximate to the entrance rather than in no man's land between the first and second level.
And then, one of my concerns, like we had talked about, was the traffic. I believe there's a request for a waiver of the traffic study. And I, in passing, talked about Parent, and, I mean, one of his thoughts was, we know that the road is, the traffic's not throughout there. So as far as waiving a traffic study, that's one thing, but chances are to improve that area, especially after adding this, one will have to be done in the future. And if there's any remediation based on adding in another hundred vehicles, I mean, I would be up to waive the traffic study as far as in lieu of a payment to the town so that the town can study this to come up with a conceivable way to help out. I think that's something that the board should think about if we're going to continue that.
And they have offered eighty-five hundred. But I don't have anything in writing, and we have a specific agreement that needs to be written and signed.
Okay, so again, we can get that by the next meeting?
If the eighty-five hundred is going to be acceptable to the board. It is to Bob Parent for the traffic light mediation that will be put into a fund that we already have.
Well, that would be for adjusting the traffic lights?
If need be, yeah.
And no way does that
When you say adjusting the traffic lights, how so?
As far as doing a study on them to see
Duration of?
The duration, how long they should be on.
And it would basically be for the main corridor?
Exactly. It's not just the lights at the corner. It would be the ones before, so that, you know, maybe these turn green, and there's a timeframe in between to clear out the traffic to allow this traffic out before the next light turns on. I mean, I'm looking at it, and I drove up and down there. There's really no place for a slip lane or anything like that going in.
No, there is not. And you have residential right on the opposite side.
Yeah, that's, that's tough.
Yeah.
You also have the
Great issue, yeah.
As far as a traffic study, do we have any numbers as far as what a traffic study would cost?
According to Gary Weiner, he said that he talked with a couple of people, and I'm not sure what companies he talked to, but it was eighty-five hundred.
For a simplistic traffic study?
That was an average of the two that he received.
Okay, and I'm not sure what the scope was. Do you know what the scope was?
No, no, he just threw a bunch of initials for names.
Right, yeah.
I mean, to me, that is acceptable, because, I mean, they're adding to the traffic, but they're not the only contributor to the traffic. All of those buildings along there, communally, have done this. And to put an overdue burden on the last one end is, I think, not fair. So if eighty-five hundred is a reasonable number, then that helps, you know?
I would be in agreement as well. The only thing I would like to see is the scope of the traffic study.
Well, I guess that's my whole concern is, eighty-five hundred was for just an absolute basic traffic.
But being that there's already a problem there that they're not creating, you know, they shouldn't be burdened with that whatsoever. But for future, correct. If they're adding to the problem, yeah.
Yeah, they shouldn't
My concern is if we have to do a traffic study within the next year to fix the lights and redo the timing, then not only does the town have to pay for the traffic study, which should be the eighty-five hundred, but the full remediation. Like I said, it's one of those where, in my opinion, it should be a little bit higher. But again, I don't know exactly what a traffic study would be.
I can't agree with that or disagree with that, not knowing the specifics on it.
And I don't know the scope, so it will be difficult for me.
That would be my question, what's the scope? And if the scope is a large enough area, and not monstrous, not monstrous, I don't want to I don't see an undue
Yeah, my feeling is Bob Parent used to be a traffic engineer. He used to do traffic studies, so I would kind of trust whatever he come up with.
If he's comfortable, I'm, I'm comfortable.
And I thought we got some traffic counts on this recently, the MPM work. So there's counts at least out there.
There may have been, yeah.
When we were doing the affected community, neighboring affected community.
I'm not sure if those were inflated.
I don't know who did them. I thought it was done by PVPC, but, you know, MPM funded it, so it may have been underinflated. I don't know.
Yes, and it needed to be traffic engineers, and PVPC does not have traffic engineers, so.
I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, well, because we ended up with another project, but anyway. I mean, I can find out what the scope is and see, maybe he can tell me what it is, and I can give you the amount. But I mean, like I said, we're going to need it in writing, and there's a specific agreement that has to be signed. Like you remember on Benton Drive?
Yes.
We had it, and the one that we have on Chestnut and Shaker. That's totally, you know, they're different funds. But this will be for the whole corridor. It won't just be for Westwood and North Main. It'll be that entire corridor, so.
Anything that can begin to help alleviate
Right.
The future financial
But I'd be happy to talk to Bob again about it.
That'd be great.
So if we can get the fire department happy, and if we can get that piece of paper by the next meeting, then I think we'd be in a position to vote on it. But I wouldn't want to do it beforehand, because things could change.
If you want to continue, and I can do six fifteen on the twenty-third of August.
So is there a motion to continue the public hearing?
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
My name is
I'm supposed to reopen it to the public anyways, right?
Yes. My name is Kevin Coughlin. I have a couple of questions. One, when I purchased the property, the previous owner had said he had gone to the planning board and was approved for medical and bank. And he was approved for twenty-one thousand square feet. When Charlie and I looked at this, I did not feel, one, I wanted the extra three thousand square feet, and I thought the parking was tight. Am I been misled, or did I misunderstand? But to my knowledge, according to the previous owner, he went all through this, had the plans, and was approved for a bank and for a professional building. That's it.
What I can tell you is I've been on the board, this is my fifth year, and this is the first time this parcel's come in front of me.
And I've been here twenty years, and it's
No. So the plans that I have were just never submitted to the board.
Okay, what might have happened, because he did put a foundation in twenty-five, thirty years ago, maybe as long as twenty-five or thirty years ago. But that's, I mean, that's a very long time ago.
I've been here twenty years.
That foundation went in prior to twenty years ago?
I think it was for a bank.
Are we sure about that? Because when I was doing the credit union, I don't
There was never anything that was brought before the
I thought it was an existing foundation.
Yeah, from the old
Oh, that foundation's been there forever.
Yes, yeah, okay, yes.
And he put it in twenty-five, thirty years ago.
Willow Glen Restaurant.
Yes.
Was that where it was?
Yeah. So that foundation's been in.
It was part of the Willow Glen, yeah.
The second question that I have for you, yes? This eighty-five hundred dollars, which personally, to be frank, it almost seems like hush money. Okay, but if I understand the concept, is if there's a problem, you'll use this for the general fund? Is that correct? If there's a problem?
It's not in the general fund. It's basically to remediate any traffic issues on that stretch of road to make the traffic better.
So would the board be willing to say, if there is no traffic issue?
But there already is. There's already traffic problems there.
So let's just say there is this
The re-timing of the lights would be almost a shoo-in that has to be done in order to allow traffic. Otherwise, you're going to have people sitting in your building and never be able to get out into the traffic.
Right, so what Deborah's saying is, for the funeral home, for the reminder, for the two other professional buildings, were they, was it necessary for them? I mean, the traffic, I've been in that building now, I think, sixteen years. So I deal with the traffic every day. My question is, is if it's been like that, other than timing on the lights, what possibly could we do to remediate it? You can't make the street bigger. You can't put in an extra lane.
There actually is an option, because the town owns additional property on the sides of the road. I just don't think it's practical to put in an extra lane, because you're probably looking in the millions to do it. And that's what we're saying now, is, we're not sure. And instead of having you do a traffic study, which is required unless we waive it, for them to come back and say, "The intersection's horrible." You know, it's so great
Yeah, I guess another way of looking at it is, we're looking at eighty-five hundred hours. Do you want to spend eighty-five hundred dollars to find out what we already know? That it's pretty busy there? As opposed to taking the eighty-five hundred, putting it into account, where it can actually do something?
And my question is, it's just for conversation purposes. Let's say it comes to forty-five hundred. Do you reimburse me the extra four thousand dollars? In other words, we're just picking a number, and my point is, is maybe that number is low, maybe it's high, but couldn't we just simply say, if we're going to draw up the paperwork, we commit to eighty-five hundred dollars? And if the remediation costs sixty-five hundred dollars, you kick back to two thousand? In other words, why put it in the fund if it's not needed?
But the other side of coin, though, if you did a traffic study, we know that would be eighty-five hundred dollars, because that was the number that Gary gave us at the last meeting.
Right, but it's only going to prove what everybody sitting in the room knows. I mean, it's just like wasting money. So I have no objections to putting it in a general fund. I get it, I think I understand it. My question is
Just yet.
Well, I won't say the general fund.
It's specifically, just an account earmarked only for improvements on that.
And if those improvements are less than eighty-five hundred dollars, if we're going to draw up the paperwork, I'm wondering if we could add in here, if it's less than eighty-five hundred, would you refund the money?
The town has never done that, because it's
I don't think it's ever been less.
It's going to be a lot more.
Yeah, my understanding of it is, it's just a little, if there was
A drop in the bucket.
To, if the town was to determine, which we already know, future, that there is a traffic problem, they, whatever they do to rectify it will cost grossly more than that.
And we don't know what that would be other than an extra lane? In other words, you're going to take property from the existing buildings on either side, which I guess anything is possible, but it doesn't seem practical to me. Going up and down that street for sixteen years, I'm thinking to myself, we know it's a problem, but what solution is going to be realistic and reasonable?
Well, I know they did a solution on Shaker Road. I called it the suicide lane down the middle, to where it's a right and left turn
Does help.
Whichever way you're coming.
Except the other day, I was driving down there, and somebody was using
And is there space for that suicide lane on North Main Street?
I'm not a traffic engineer.
I have no idea.
I mean, my gut feeling is, is on Shaker you do. But on this particular street, unless you're taking property away, I don't, you know, I'm not going to come across that I know these things as fact. I can just tell you, common sense says you don't have enough room for a third lane. So we know the problem, there are solutions, but those solutions are not practical in this particular case. So the point, without keeping you later than I already have, is, would you at least consider that if the money isn't used to reimburse the person who put it in? If it is, it is, you got it. I just, in this particular case, I don't see that money actually being used in total for this. Maybe you're going to change the timing on the lights, but in the end
If I may.
Please.
The funds that are there are not, it's one fund. It doesn't say that this amount was from Mr. X, and this amount was from Mrs. Y, and this is It's a fund to remediate all of the corridor problems for all of the lights and everything. Once that money's there, that's it.
Not just North Main Street, any street?
No, it's North Main. Yours is North Main. We have another fund for Benton and Chestnut, and we have another fund for Shaker and Chestnut.
These funds aren't coalesced. There's earmarks specifically for those areas. And do those funds gather interest? Do they just sit there perpetually?
They gather interest for the town.
For the town.
For the town. Once you write the check and sign the agreement, the money belongs to the town.
And it can only be spent to improve that particular corridor?
It's sort of a circular argument. I just, I mean, that point, I'm not going to belabor it. My opinion is, whether it's worth anything, is, I don't see where you're going to get any improvement. There's no northland. So at the end of the eighty-five hundred dollar check, I'm going, I don't see any bang for my buck. We already know there's problems. Problems aren't going to get better. It's the last piece of property, to my knowledge, to be developed on that street. And I'm going, I've been sitting here for how long? Can we get this thing going and get it done? And it just, it sort of bothers me that I'm putting up the eighty-five hundred, which may shortchange the town, if I could actually see a positive result from it. But I don't know where you're going with it. Suicide lane, no room. And perhaps we could come to a compromise if the fire and police or the people said there's no room for a suicide lane, and you're not going to take people's property, is it necessary to come up with a full eight thousand five hundred dollars? If that fund is just simply earmarked for North Main Street, that corridor, I'm going, what am I getting for my eighty-five hundred dollars?
It was offered, we didn't invest it.
Well, I apologize, I was waiting in conference, but when I heard this from Gary and Charlie, I said, "This is outside my area of expertise," but just common sense struck me. It just sort of rubbed me the wrong way. This is a beautiful building. It's going to be an asset to the town. What's currently there, in my opinion, is an eyesore. And I've been working on this project for two years, and I'm finally close to fruition, and I'm saying, it's just sort of like a little jab for me, another eighty-five hundred dollars. I know I can afford it, I just don't see the value that I'm getting for it, unless there's something the board can show me and say, "Geez, Kevin, this suicide lane is very practical, and I think it could help." And I go, "Okay," because that's good for my business. You know, the less traffic, the better. But I just don't see that happening in this particular problem.
Robin, just out of curiosity, when monies are used, as far as, let's say, Chestnut Street, and they put in an additional lane or whatever, are the bars notified what's being done?
No.
Okay.
There's an accounting, so if you ever want an accounting of it. But I would hate for the applicant to feel that he's being railroaded by the planning board. Just don't waive the, don't waive the traffic study and make that requirement, and he doesn't have to pay any money to the town. This was offered to the board. I didn't say I need to have you do this. That's very important that you know that. I never said you have to do this.
And I'm not going to put Charlie or Gary under the wire.
No, 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 and I don't need to throw anybody.
It's just in my opinion, I'm going, we're going to do a traffic study to find out we got a traffic problem. And we all understand that there's a problem. What we're looking for is a solution. It's better for the town, and it's better for me. And in this particular situation, I don't see a practical solution. If there's something that I misunderstood, or there's something you see being on the board, being more knowledgeable than me, I go, "Take the eighty-five hundred, and let's move on." But after you take the eighty-five hundred, I'm going, "What are we going to do with it? You're not going to widen the street, and you're not going to put an extra lane in." So I don't see where the dollars are going for, and to spend it on a traffic study seems to me just sort of like salt in the wound. We already know We already know there's a problem, what we want is a solution. And if I, if I'm willing to give up parking spaces.
I, I think the conversation that needs to be had about what that money would be spent on, is a conversation you need to have with the Department of Public Works, okay? We will not.
Bob said that he can't give that answer, I've already talked to him.
Well, if he can't give the answer, we can't give the answer.
Right, not right now.
Because when that money is spent, it will be spent by the Department of Public Works, okay? And how they choose to spend it, whether it's for timing the lights, okay, or doing counts, or whatever it is they feel is necessary to do, to try to improve the situation there, it's gonna be their decision as to how that money's spent. We don't get into that loop, okay? So I, you know, I, I understand where you're coming from completely, but we, we can't answer your question on how that money would actually be spent tonight. We don't know.
So the people who can, you're saying, Robin, that they're not willing to do that?
No, I'm not saying that, if, if I may.
Please.
They're not saying, he's not at all saying he's not willing to. It's just at this particular time, he can't give you an, an honest answer. He doesn't wanna say, this is what we're going to do, and then six months down the road, find out that there's another avenue that he has to pursue, and the money's used somewhere else. There are no strings attached, either, either the applicant, who happens to be you, Dr. Coughlin, offers to do this in lieu of a tra- traffic study, and, or you can do your traffic study. It's just part of the procedure for site plan review, it's a requirement, so.
Well, I won't waste your time, I'll simply say.
No, it's not, it, it's not, and I don't know.
Well, I get it, if you can't do it, I'll pony up the eighty-five hundred dollars and we move on.
But I don't want you to feel like you're hostage either, I mean, that's not right.
No, it may not be right, but you're in a difficult spot, I'm in a difficult spot. My overall question, without beating a dead horse, is when the money is paid, other than the timing of the lights, I don't see another logical, practical answer to our problem. And I'm going, if changing the timing of the lights is eight thousand five hundred dollars, we got other problems in the town.
It's much more than that, according to DPW.
To change the timing?
Because it's not just the lights on North Main Street. I mean, on Westwood and North Main, it goes to Dearborn, and then it goes right outside of the Shopping Plaza, and then it goes down to Harkness.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, if we were changing the timing on all the lights, wouldn't we have to do a traffic study to even get there?
Absolutely.
You know?
I mean, it's, you know, I'm sure that Mr. Parent would be happy to meet with you, to give you some more background information, but to tell you explicitly today that the money would only be used for this specific project, he's not comfortable with that. I've already asked him beforehand, and.
Well, I made my best case, I'll concede, and eighty-five hundred dollars.
That's not good, that's not good.
Well, but.
Think about it.
Well, with that, whether I pay Peter or pay Paul, at the end of the day, I'm paying someone.
That's right.
So the time and energy that this project has taken is, is, has been exhausting, in my opinion. But it's not an area that I'm an expert in, and if that's what has to be done, then that's what has to be done. My main concern is, the property's been vacant, it's an eyesore, and I think it's time to get it developed and use it. And if writing you out a check for eight thousand five hundred dollars to alleviate traffic studies and perhaps help the traffic situation, then that's life, we do it, we move on.
Great. Okay, with that, is there anyone else? I'm gonna bring it back to the board, then. Do we have a motion?
A motion to close, no, to continue the public hearing.
Till?
August twenty-third.
Third, at six fifteen.
Correct.
Six fifteen, is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on it? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm very happy to meet with you at any time. I will contact the police department as well as the fire department.
Charlie's gonna take care of the police and the fire, so they have the forty-two foot radius. Well, get a hold of Gary, and he'll make the changes, but he'll.
And we'll, I'll, I'll schedule another meeting, so we can all sit down, so we don't have to keep calling here.
Thank you very much, appreciate you.
Now, if, if, if you get approved at the next meeting, will you be able to break ground this year?
I'd like to say yes.
Yeah.
My preference was to have this going along shorter, we're almost to the end of August, so I just hate to see the building in the middle of the.
You're gonna say, "We're like you did, right?"
About fifty percent. Sure, Doctor likes a feedback under.
Oh, the, the bid drawings are fifty percent?
Yeah.
So you still have to finish up the drawings anyway?
Right.
Without the bid.
But he hasn't had the opportunity yet to review the cost that it generated by that, and I wanna make sure he has that as well. So we'll, we'll meet again on the twenty-third of August?
And by the way, I, I, my, my profession is, I'm a real estate developer myself, I've met before hundreds of planning boards myself, and I, I understand your argument from sitting in your, in your seat. I can't really offer anything more to say about it, other than.
You don't wanna cut me a check, then?
I, 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 I can sympathize with what you're saying.
And we all sympathize, we do.
No, I appreciate your concern. Thank you all very much.
One, one last quick thing, with regards to the plans that you were given by the previous owner. If they had been approved, they would have been at the registry, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
The site plan was, was approved, it would have been at, uh.
No, not a site plan.
Not a site plan? Okay.
You do a full signature on it, though.
But if you don't act on them, within five years, they're done anyway.
Right. But there should have been a signature from a planning board member on the plan, if it was approved.
But you don't have any of your records, so. Thanks, folks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Don't look sad. Just go come to the office tomorrow, okay?
Welcome back, Mike.
See ya.
Okay, under new business.
Charlie, thank you, okay? I'll give you a call this week, okay? Thank you very much.
Okay, under new business, we have a request for waiver of site plan review, Portico and Greenwich Services.
Request for waiver of site plan review, property owner is Richard and Samuel Condon, forty-eight Greenwich Road, East Long Meadow. Phone numbers are listed here, name proposed business is Portico and Greenwich Services, DBA, Dragon Computers. Owner of business is Richard Condon. Address is forty-eight Greenwich Road. Property address is the same, property district is A. Allowed use is yes, proposed hours of operation are twenty to thirty hours a week. Number of employees are one. Summary of business, computer consulting and repair services, no clients come to the home, all client contacts, uh, all client contacts are clients, oh, at, at the client's location. No storage of supplies or equipment, no commercial vehicles on premises. One employee, hours of operation, twenty to thirty hours. Application's been signed and dated July twenty-eighth, twenty sixteen.
Let's see what's on the mark.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Request for waiver of site plan review, M. Scott Investment Services Inc., sixty-one North Main Street.
Okay, property owner is LLP North Main Street LLC. Owner's address is, oh, sixty-one North Main Street, Suite One, East Long Meadow. Phone numbers are listed here, name proposed business is M. Scott Investment Services Inc. Owner of business is Michael Patpachi. Business owner's address is one-one-two Nottingham Drive, East Long Meadow. Property address is sixty-one R. North Main Street, Suite Three. Per, uh, property district is commercial, allowed use is yes, proposed hours of operation are eight in the morning to five Monday through Sunday. Number of employees, including owner, is four. Dated last parking plan is December twenty-fifteen. Summary of business operation is investment management and financial planning advice. Uh, number of commercial vehicles is one, the application's been signed and dated August first, twenty sixteen.
This is the new building?
The plant, mhm.
Okay. I, I kept hearing the R. and I'm like sixty-one, oh, here, the rear.
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 And if you remember, when the fire department, they said they need to have that address, so that in case of an emergency, but, no.
So is there a motion? Is there a second? Motion to approve has been made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Request for waiver of site plan review, O. Sullivan Landscaping.
Uh, property owner is Timothy O. Sullivan, one-four-four South Ave. Smith Ave or South Ave?
Smith.
Smith Ave. Phone numbers are listed here, name of proposed business is O. Sullivan Landscaping. Owner of business is Timothy O. Sullivan. Uh, business owner's address is one-forty-four Smith Ave, East Long Meadow. Property address is the same. Uh, property district is commercial, it's allowed use, proposed hours of operation are ten hours weekly for billing and computer use. Number of employees, including owner, is one. Summary of business, I'm establishing a landscape business with all equipment stored at my garage in Springfield. My personal Ford F- three fifty has a lettered tailgate only, is parked, is a parked truck in the side yard in a fenced area. Number of commercial, commercial vehicles is one, the application's been signed and dated August fourth, twenty sixteen.
And the district, that's residential C., isn't it? He's got it listed as C. Okay. Sounds like a home office, he's not keeping his vehicles there.
Right.
Is there a motion?
A motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we, all right, we had two motions and two approvals, so.
Well, there was a motion to approve, and there was a motion, so George made a motion to approve.
George, and who did, who did the second?
Deb.
All right, okay.
Yeah, there's a second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Request for waiver of site plan review, Subway, change of ownership, twenty-four Shaker Road.
I know this was not on the original agenda, however, he came in later today, and I just thought I would see what the board wanted to do.
Is Subway under a special permit now?
No. No, because they do not prepare the food there, they don't bake and serve to the public.
They do bake.
Big bread.
They, yeah, they put all the ingredients together and people take it.
But actually, they probably, technically, they might not be baking, it's probably pre-made, and they put it in an oven, getting it out of a freezer.
They didn't, they never did meet the requirement.
They're reheating almost, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe they're, I don't know.
Do they have tables now? Do they have tables inside?
For sitting, yeah. They, the board determined that they didn't meet the criteria when they first came in, so.
When was that?
Two thousand and, after ninety-nine. Ninety-nine was the bylaw change. I think Subway was two thousand and eight. I'd have to check the old filing, but they've been there for a long time.
Because I know, I had asked Robin to check into Dick's Convenience, because they used to prepare food for sale, to be consumed off the premises, basically.
Right.
And they didn't meet the criteria for a restaurant. But that's off the premises, a restaurant is food, um.
To be consumed.
On the premises. And. And I think that's where Subway comes in, is basically consumed off the premises. But, but they, they have places where you can eat on the premises.
Yeah, they have one table or two tables.
Okay, but, I mean, we, we make, made Florentina go as a restaurant.
Well, they had like forty-five tables.
Quite a bit of tables.
Quite a lot of tables, but, you know, a lot, a lot of their stuff is takeout, too. And they, they're making sandwiches, which is what these people.
No, they, they bake there, too. They, they cook, they have an, a kitchen, Subway doesn't have a kitchen.
Tell you what, because this was brought in late and wasn't on the original agenda, why don't we table it till our next meeting, and that'll give us each time to do some review on it. I, I, I'd prefer that. I, I, my concern is.
Because they're just changing ownership. That's all they're doing, they're, they're operating under a valid permit now, so.
Well, it's a waiver.
Right, exactly. With a change of the name of the ownership. In other words, it's a, it's a, um. Yeah. Yeah, everything is the same, and if they, if they had gotten their food permit licenses under Subway, they wouldn't have to change it. But unfortunately, the franchise person had their K. something, KMTX or something like that.
So they will have to reapply for license.
And so all of the licenses have to match, and so that's why they had to do a waiver to bring the names into compliance, but they were approved prior to.
Knowing that it wasn't on the original agenda, and having questions that we should just.
I can get the minutes from when they were first approved.
That would be great, because I, I know we, we considered, when we were talking to the folks about the new gas station, which hasn't started yet, that whether or not they would need a special permit, because they, if they had tables inside.
Right, but, for example, Dunkin' Donuts isn't under a special permit either.
Pride gas station, and, well, they are, aren't some Pride under a special permit?
Pride's under a special permit for a different reason, not for a restaurant.
Yes, you're right.
Convenience store and gas station is a special permit rather than a restaurant, so.
Mike, I'd almost be up to approve it, I mean, it was approved, approved a long time ago, and it's funny, the business doing the exact same thing without issue.
I would normally agree with you, except I have a problem with it not being on the original agenda and being submitted today. So I think for that reason, and knowing that there may be questions, we're better off under open meeting law, continuing it to, or, or taking it up at the next meeting.
Sure, and I can provide the minutes and what the board decided.
That'd be great.
Okay.